Welcome and we're glad you're here. The first thing we're going to do are recognitions. We have, I mean we have a big recognition here. Oh, I'm sorry. After the roll call. Which will be where this is.
Albers?
Here.
Cooper?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Blacky?
Here.
Pauli? Ginelli? Matrina? Petrofessa?
Yes.
Taprasak?
Yeah.
Tranzola?
Here. To get that done. All right, our recognitions. We have, in our audience, I think he's here, I think that's going to be him. A Danbury, Danbury High School student who is a semifinalist in the 2016 National Merit Scholarship Program. Would you like to talk about that, Sal? That's it.
Oh, and Ralph, is he here? Come on up.
Want to congratulate Ginelli.
Thank you.
Just so that we all know, there's approximately 60,000 people are identified after they've taken the PSAT. And you're down to, did they give you the number that we're down to?
I think 16,000 or something.
16,000, that we're down. So just getting to that point is a phenomenal accomplishment.
Thank you.
They'll be announcing a finalist, right? Sometime when?
Uh, soon.
Can I give you a hand?
I have to submit another stage of application before October, then I think around November, December, yeah, before.
It's based on PSAT that you, you talked, correct? And so it's a national forum, you all know that, the competition is right in front of you. So the work that you did, this is purely, pretty competitive, to say the least. We're really proud that you represented our district that way. We have other scholars as well in the past, and is a wonderful program. It's a great analogy for the family and for the district. It speaks to the integrity and the rigor of the school system, so I can congratulate you.
Thank you.
So I'll be able to do it. Shake hands, because they don't get to do that very often.
Would you like to talk to us about Danbury High, winning this, the award in the state tournament?
The Ross Valley, just happens to be here. Quickly.
Oh, is this you? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. There are a few things going on, and I'll be talking about the Perkins Innovation Grant in just a little while.
One second, one second. Is Mom here too? Can she stand up?
Yes, sir.
Good luck.
But there were also two awards that we were notified about. They contacted Gary Macchio at the high school. And our students came in first place in the state in terms of results on the Connecticut Career in Technology Education State Testing in Computer Information Systems. And overall, the high school was awarded second place in the state. So this is very impressive. It's one of the largest programs that the state has seen. So we have a lot of students at Danbury High School that are involved in career and tech ed classes, and they did fairly well this year, and we're going to try and improve even more.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for talking. Thank you very much. Board welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of stem operations and programs that concern them. The board will not commit any expressions of personal complaints or determinatory comments about the Board of Education personnel and students who are against any person connected with the Danbury Public School System. Michael's getting the Google list now. Kathy Snow. Would you ask her my name?
Hi. My name is Kathy Snow, and I've spoken before, and I always get nervous, so please bear with me. But I just wanted to read part of an email that I had sent to the Board of Education about the middle school lottery process. I'm not sure if everyone got a chance to read it, and I also wanted to just make sure that it was recorded. It was basically saying, "As a parent of a current fifth grader, I would like to request a review of the lottery process for Westside Middle School before the applications are opened for the 2016-17 school year." My understanding is for incoming sixth graders, there are 50 students accepted from the Broadview population and 50 from the Rogers Park population. And I'm just not sure why there's four separate lotteries for the two different, there's two lotteries for each academy, when it's an intra-district school, meaning within Danbury only. It seems like having two lotteries could potentially even be unfair, giving a certain population a better chance of getting in. My understanding is for this year, going into Global Studies, the applications received from Broadview population were 145. The applications received from the Rogers Park families were 204. So you had a better chance of getting into Global Studies if you were from Broadview. For the STEM, again, the Broadview applications were 200, Rogers Park were 230. So I don't think there's any way it's ever going to be exactly the same number of applications, so I don't understand why there's just one lottery for Global Studies and one lottery for STEM. It was also recorded in the October Board of Ed minutes from 2014 that inherently there are issues saving seats from both schools, and I don't know how we could do that. That was in the superintendent's report about official enrollment numbers. So I'm not sure if the intent is to...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Could you just say that again?
I'm sorry.
It's from the October 8, 2014 minutes. It says, "Miss Tranzillo had some questions about Broadview Middle School 6th grade. She thought when we opened up Westside, the numbers at Broadview would be much lower. The superintendent said we did not read district, Broadview, or Rogers Park. Mr. Martino said we took in 100 students, 50 from each school. Dr. Pascarella said we are going to have a presentation and review the lottery. Inherently, there are some issues in saving seats for both schools, and I don't know how we could do that. Our intent is to have 50-50. Miss Albers asked Mr. Martino if he could prepare a report on where we are and what we are doing." I'm not sure if that ever happened, or if it was open to the public. But anyway, at the last Board of Ed meeting, Dr. Glass even had said that the middle schools are stabilizing, so, you know, it doesn't seem to be this overpopulation issue anymore. So, so that's my, that's why I'm here, is to just either make it transparent, because parents don't know, even in the brochure about the lottery, it says, "A lottery will be held, and a waitlist will be generated." Not four waitlists, not four lotteries. So I think to be transparent and to make things as fair as possible, this needs to be looked at again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Next speaker is Nancy Trowe. From Citywide PTL.
Hello, everyone. I also do not like speaking in front of other people, so forgive me. I am here to cordially invite all the Board of Education candidates to our Meet the Board Candidate Night on Wednesday, October 21st, at Broadview Middle School in the Auditorium at 7:00. You'll be getting invitations sent out to you. You'll each be allowed a five-minute presentation, which will then be followed by a half-hour question and answer period. There'll be time after for you to be able to talk one-on-one with the public. We appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to join us. Let's hope for a large turnout. And I have put an RSVP for October 14th, and it'll be going to me personally. I gave you my phone number, my email address, whichever is easier for you to get to me. So I'm hoping that you can come. Those of you that are here, I see, I think there's two of you here. And I hope a lot of people will show up, because the Board of Ed is very important, and I really appreciate all of you that you do, and I wish everyone else did as much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Nancy. All right, while Nancy's giving that, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? All righty. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar, Kath.
Motion that the Board of Education approves the items on the Consent Calendar exhibits 15-148 through 15-149 as recommended.
Do I hear a second? Second by Ralph Petrofessa. Is there any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, if I have your minds all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Is there any, unless there's any objections or abstentions? Okay. Seeing none, let's go. Is there an employee representative here to speak? No? Student representatives are here. I see one. Will you introduce yourselves?
Sure. My name is Alexandra Frendergast, and it's good to be back, this is my first meeting of the year. And I just wanted to bring back a report. I attended my first statewide student advisory council meeting yesterday, and I got caught up to speed with some of the things that the statewide Board of Education is focusing its efforts on this year, and the statewide student advisory council has also made some conclusions about its focus for this year. So as of right now, statewide Board of Education has begun to discuss certification for teachers, what some of those requirements should be. It's also delved into college certification of teachers. Some of the reasons being that one of the concerns this year is whether or not Connecticut schools are properly preparing their students for college. It's also developing its strategic point or comprehensive plan for education this year, with a special focus on the equity of underprivileged high schools and schools throughout the state of Connecticut. It's extremely important to the state board this year that it works to make sure that finances are a little more equal for high schools and middle schools and elementary schools and so on across the state. As for the statewide student advisory council, we are working on three major issues this year with a midterm report for the statewide Board of Education. The first issue is related to physical health and fitness, as well as wellness. We're looking into some of the concerns some people have about the fact that high schools, a lot of high schools don't take after-school sports as a credit for gym, and that's a concern to a lot of students, because they feel as if they're too tired to actually put the biggest effort possible forth in their after-school sports, simply because they've taken gym throughout the day, and there's really no need for it, or at least that's what some of these students feel. The second effort is related to 12th graders. Interestingly enough, the board is predominantly, it consists of seniors. So the idea is to make sure that 12th graders aren't slacking off at the end of the year, so to speak. There's a new initiative to try and stop that. And we're also working to make sure that high school students are prepared for college, because there are certain concerns with reports that are coming back indicating that not all, that some students have to take remedial courses once they enter college. So the student advisory board will be working on those issues, as well as a third, which is a wild card as of right now, and it will be announced. So I look forward to giving you some more information about how that goes, once we really get into things during the year.
Thanks, Lexie. Are there any other student representatives here from either the high school or ACE? Okay, seeing none. Perhaps we could remind the high school and ACE, the principals, that we need representation here at the table? Okay?
Yeah, maybe because it's off Tuesday.
Oh, right, tomorrow's a holiday.
I'm sure.
That sounds probably what it is. Okay. How many can you address? Okay. Now it's time to move. All righty. Our next is a presentation by Dr. Harry Ross Valley on the Innovation Grant.
Did you want us to move, Harry?
I see this, the torture machine is here. Oh, that's not for you.
Okay, I have some brief remarks, and then I'm going to turn this over to Katie Tong. There has been a Health and Bioscience Academy at Danbury High School for well over 15 years, and we have had limited CNA, which is Certified Nurses Aid Training, stretching back to when Danbury High School was opened. Katie Tong has developed an extremely successful medical careers program at Danbury High School, and we have students placed regularly at Danbury Hospital in unpaid supervised internships. As our program continues to grow, we're reaching a saturation point where additional students cannot be scheduled for the supervised hospital rounds. At the same time, our community has a large number of skilled nursing care facilities for post-operative patients and for the elderly. Part of our curriculum already addresses issues in aging, but we do not yet have cooperative agreements with all the local nursing homes. So Katie and I applied for a Perkins Innovation Grant, and the amount of the application and the award was just, excuse me, was just under $40,000. Half of that amount was earmarked for transportation. Katie has been making appointments and will make personal visits to each of the facilities, and arrange for students to come on a regular basis between November and April. Some of the students will gain specialized knowledge on a particular disorder, such as diabetes, by making visits to different nursing facilities and comparing the approaches taken at each with regarding, with regard to educating parents, sorry, with regard to educating patients, more used to parents, with regard to educating patients and providing preventive care and providing care for those patients who are diagnosed and suffering from a particular malady or disorder. Other students will gain general knowledge across the spectrum about issues in aging from the perspective of the multiple services offered at one facility that they will visit repeatedly. Another aspect of this program will be increased career awareness. Students will get permission and video record interviews with caregivers, social workers, and employees. The patients will not be interviewed in order to preserve their anonymity and privacy. The students will edit these recordings and archive them into a library of career interviews accessible for future years' students, as well as on a Connecticut State Department of Education website, where they can be accessed by other medical careers programs in communities that do not have access to as many healthcare specialists as we are fortunate to have here in Danbury. In summary, the grant will expand students' understanding of embracing issues in aging by providing them with regular interactions in local sites and a purposeful project to become knowledgeable about for particular issues. The objectives are to get students to have onsite experiences, to gain knowledge firsthand in a real-world setting, to learn to use digital video recording and editing equipment, to establish strong ties to the local community, and to develop a library of career opportunities. The outcomes will be positive experiences in local community facility settings, increased understanding about issues in aging, and increased knowledge about career opportunities. The collateral benefits to this grant are that Katie's program becomes much more widely known, we will have placement locations for students as we expand enrollment in her program, and we will provide a model for the state that can be replicated in other towns using nursing homes and rehab facilities in addition to medical facilities and hospitals in which the students can learn on the job. I'm now going to turn things over to Katie, and she has brought some of her students with her, and they can also speak eloquently to our goal for this year.
Thank you.
Katie, there's a mic there, can you use that?
I just wanted to introduce some of my students before I begin. Here's, here they are, they are representative of our program, and they're juniors and seniors in the high school.
Pull the mic out, honey. Don't worry.
So we're in a unique position here in Danbury. In Danbury, over the next five years, our senior population, meaning 65-plus, is going to increase by 31.5% in Danbury alone. Of that 31.5%, 44% of that are going to be 90-plus. All right, on the flip side of that, there's going to be a need of five, this is nationally, 5.6 million more healthcare workers on a national scale, even larger here in Danbury. It looks as if the, as you look at the economy in general and the growth of the job market, the healthcare job market is going to grow at two times that of the national economic market for jobs. So the need is out there for healthcare workers, these guys. We're in a unique position at Danbury High School. We have a wonderful program already, the Health and Bioscience Academy, where we, or saturation, we have as many students as our program can handle, and we have more applicants that we turn away, because simply we just can't take them in. We also have a unique position, because 85 to 90% of our students who have graduated from the program over the past few years actually enter the field. We have many students now who actually are working at Danbury Hospital on eight towers, nine towers, these are cardiac units, the med-surg units. I have students who just graduated, and I had Bethel Healthcare call me and say, "You know what? Give me your list of all your students who graduated, I want to hire them." Danbury Hospital doesn't hire new grads, they only hire one year out, except for Danbury High School students, because they like our students and they have such a good reputation. Others, Pope John Paul here in Danbury calls me every May, "Can I have your list of students? We want to hire." The market's great, they can start at $12 an hour, right out of being 18, 17-years-old. And I have students now that are in pre-med programs, already are working as nurses, and they're out there still, and stay within the profession. So the unique thing here we want to do is be able to bridge that gap. We have about 3,000 students at the high school, bridge the gap between the need in Danbury and what we have available right now by offering more students this opportunity, this huge growing field, especially when people are looking for good jobs. And the beauty of healthcare, as you know, is that you can have students go into it at a low level and earn a living working as a CNA, nursing assistant, or take it as far as they want to and become a nurse, a doctor, a physical therapist, whatever it may be. So with this Innovations Grant, I've already been able to contact various nursing homes, especially Bethel Healthcare, the hospital, there's a new hospice center in Danbury, the senior center downtown Danbury, and we're going to be sending the students out to not only explore, but because of their unique background, where they are certified in the field of nursing assistance, they will be able to educate and actually provide care. Hopefully to do two things here. One, expand their knowledge of it, so that it's a continual growth for them to want to enter the field, and to hopefully ignite some education for the elderly population about issues they're going to be facing regarding aging. Whether it's something as simple as changes in bodily function in your musculoskeletal system, as far as getting up and out of a chair, or more difficult issues, helping families who are dealing with dementia, and what do you do when you have to go to work as adults, and you have an adult mother or father who's home with Alzheimer's, and how do you take care of them? And really helping the full picture, not just, not just that elderly person, but the whole family unit. And that's going to be a huge issue here in Danbury. We're already really lucky, like Harry had mentioned. We will be sharing this at the state level and through the Department of Education, Connecticut Department of Education and the Department of Public Health, it'll be publicized on both of their websites to use across the state for all schools that have similar programs or are aspiring to have similar programs. But we even have an extra thing that we're going to be doing, in November, I'm going to be going to a national conference, and I'll be sharing this model with, at a national forum, so that it can be replicated across the United States. In addition to that, it's going to be published on some national websites as well. Their work that they are doing this year, reaching out, their actual work from 2015-16 will be published on some national sites as well, that will be accessible for other programs. And here in the local area, Bethel Public Schools is copying our format, actually, and have just started working to build some of the programs just like us. And I'm going to a state conference in December, and I'm going to be speaking about, to about 20 other school districts, and they're going to be looking to see how can they replicate what we do here in Danbury, and make their programs just as strong. And I always get asked, "Wow, how do you have so many students, and how are they also successful?" So they have a desire, and we have a great support network at Danbury High School and the district. So that's what we're going to be doing this year, and hopefully it'll be as successful as it sounds. I'm a registered nurse, worked at Danbury Hospital, New Milford Hospital, before getting my teaching certifications and putting all of that together, that's where, how I am, what I am.
And hard to find.
Yeah, that's true. We need more people that want to go into this field, so we can take on more students.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for what you do.
For the board's information, you've gotten the attention of WestCon?
Oh, yes.
And we've had, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
I'm on the outskirts with it. Megan has, Megan Martin has told me a little bit about it, but they are very interested in doing almost, it's my understanding, similar to the early college, like with what we're doing with Nogatuck, but also doing it with WestCon and the medical careers component. Just a little side note, we have the largest program in the state of Connecticut, number of students, and we have the most successful program for our size, graduating at a 98% pass rate for the state exam, which a pass rate is, by the way, is 80%. It's not a 65.
So we're meeting with the president and the group in about a week?
Great.
To start talking about some strategies to keep promoting the school within the school, building on the program that Katie's built. So it's just been, you guys want to say anything back there? You look kind of quiet.
They're so...
Can I, any comments? How's the program?
Amazing.
Amazing?
Victoria, right here, she's a, and Carol, can you put your hands up? They're second-year students, so they've, they're already certified as nursing assistants and are taking, they were juniors, which is a rarity in the program, so they're taking the program as a second-year student. They already have their certifications, and they're actually going to be spearheading a lot of this grant, and putting them in charge of large classes, and they're going to be carrying out large portions. Victoria, she's going to be focusing on musculoskeletal issues with the elderly, including just keeping yourself mobile as you get older. And Carol, she is going to be focusing on dementia and helping families with, deal with dementia, with really the middle-aged population and their parents dealing with it, you know, the older population.
Are the students able to fit into your schedules?
We have a very unique program. We run on a block schedule within ourselves, so it's a three-period course, well, it's three classes in one. So it's a three-period course that they fit in every day, so they're getting anatomy and physiology, pathophysiology, then, so the easy way to understand this for, is if we're studying the heart, we study the structure of the heart, the function of the heart, then the diseases that go along with the heart. Then not only that, they're going to take out their stethoscopes and listen to the heart, then they're going to learn how to do EKGs of the heart, where you see the heart rhythm. Then they're going to learn how to interpret those different rhythms, know what needs to be reported, what's okay and what's not okay. Then we take it an extra unique step further, and they now go to the hospital, are on the telemetry unit, and have patients that have cardiac issues, whether it's congestive heart failure, coronary artery disease, which is the number-one killer in America, or just had a heart attack. And they're taking care of the patients. They're doing, they're using their stethoscopes right there at the hospital during the school day, listening. They're assessing the EKG strips, they're reporting that information off to the staff there, the nurses and the doctors, in real time, across the bedside, like, kind of like Grey's Anatomy, but real life. And they are, they are actually responsible for that information, taking blood pressures, taking pulses and so forth, pulse oxis, the one that goes on the finger. And they not only know how to do the skill, but they know how to take care of the person, which is even more important than doing the skill.
So... So, the reason why I bring that up, Lexi, this is for you. I've been arguing at the state level to be careful about increasing graduation requirements, that it's going to, it's going to create a real bottleneck for programs such as this. And I don't think the legislators realize, you know, what the impact on the programs at schools when they start just unilaterally increasing graduation requirements. That's something you might want to think about.
That's something we're thinking about right now, actually, about with extracurriculars.
Okay, that's really important to us.
It is. Over the past two years, it's been more of a struggle to get the students in, not because they don't want to be there, it's because they have so many other requirements, they need to fit into their schedule, that they can't take the class, even though I'll have a student come saying, "You know, I really, all my life I've wanted to be a nurse, I really wanted to be a doctor, and your class sounds great, but they say that it's really much better that I get physics and chemistry and this, and this English, and four years of math, and a language, and so I have to do those things." And there, of course, all the classes are beneficial, but there's something you lose, and the big thing I tell them they lose is, they find out if they like this before they go and pay $40,000 for the freshman year of school, and that's the nice thing, it's free.
Are there any other questions?
How many students in the program?
We can maximize at 60, with, it's because of state law. I take the students to clinicals, which is when I take them to the hospital, and they train under my nursing license, and the state law is that they, I can have a 10-to-1, 1-to-10 ratio of myself to students. And thankfully, Dr. Sal, we've been able to hire a second clinical teacher, and that's allowing us to slightly expand our size, but it's still, we have to obviously work within the safety limits, because our patients are our number-one priority in their safety.
We added that last year, right?
Right. Yep, and we continued it with this year. It's a wonderful thing.
I see, go ahead, go ahead, Anne.
So, Dr. Sal, so how does this work? They have their classes all day or throughout the day, Monday through Friday, and your classes are scheduled sometime in between that 7:00 to 2:00 time?
Yep, okay, so I've, for example, I have a class periods one through three of these students, and they're with me for the three periods straight on, let's say it's Monday, and on Tuesday they go to, I have a counterpart who does the anatomy and physiology, her name's Nicole Gurney, teacher, very nice teacher in the science department, and she does the anatomy and physiology on, let's say, Tuesday. Then Wednesday they're back with me, Thursday, back and forth, but there's four groups of students doing that total. So I have, we have two groups that run from one to, periods one through three in the morning, and then we have a second group of, or two more groups of students that run periods four through six.
Okay.
So, it's confusing.
And then all the rest of their core classes are taken?
Yep.
So why couldn't those classes be considered their science requirements?
They do meet science requirements.
Okay.
But there are certain core classes that they are required to take that are different than those, so.
All right, are there any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Great job, thank you all for coming.
Thank you very, very much, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming, thanks.
Thanks again for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Actually, my name is Kathy.
A motion that the Board of Education accept the funding of $109,500 for each FRC to continue its support at Moore Street School, FRC, and the establishment of an FRC at South Street School.
Second.
Sorry, seconded by Bob Tappersek?
Yes.
Any questions?
Good folks.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposes? Opposition? No. Okay, Ms. Fu, passes.
Pass.
Bill sent out an email last night, thank you, but I thought we had a successful ribbon cutting yesterday, and great representation there. We had our hundred students present, Ralph was there, Bob was there, and Michael, he was there. We had our partners, the industry partners, the mayor was there in the celebration. I think overall, there was a real appreciation for the work that's being done at the high school, much as, of course, what you heard about the nursing. I think Danbury, in a lot of ways, is at the cutting edge in many things that they endeavor on, and this is certainly one of them. The state now has sunsetted the middle college or the early college opportunities to four schools, so at this point, there is a funding challenge that we'll work on, and we received, I think because of yesterday made it palpable, people saw that it actually can happen, that we'll get folks step up and start assisting us with more money. Congressman Estee was there yesterday, we talked with her, she would like to submit a grant for us. We talked with, you heard Harry talk about the Perkins Innovation Grant, the state contacted me and asked for submission on that as other ways of generating funds. So they go, it's really getting people's attention, other schools would like to follow along, so we're really happy about the starting of it. Michael and Bob and Ralph, they were there.
Yeah, my son's in the program, so he, I mean, he likes it, he says it's, you know, a great, great thing, and the ceremony was, was nice, well-done, very informative. It's nice to see the support, especially for a new pilot program, that everybody's out there behind it, so it was a great, great ceremony.
No, just a great event, and it's nice to see, I know there were a lot of, the speakers mentioned the same thing yesterday, how different groups working together to achieve this, and that's one of the most impressive things, so. Hopefully it will be a great success.
In fact, we met with Danbury Savings Bank today, who helped us with the summer program, and she was there, Captain Rolonano. So there is a great interest out there, different groups coming together. So anyway, thank you all for being there, you'll hear more about the program as we go through it. October 5th, school funding meeting at 7:00 PM at Broadview. Right now, I asked this morning, we have, I think about eight to 12, other than board members, indicated they were the 10, we have some city council, government, I think, Senator Lockton's going to be there, and others, I'm hoping we have 40 or 50 people there. We sent things out to the PTO. I think it's, if we don't start doing something together as a community, we'll never realize, I think, that $40 million that is due to Danbury that we're not getting to run programs such as Katie was just talking about here, you know? It's all coming out of the same amount, but in fairness to Danbury, we're due more, we're due $40 million more, and that funding that was frozen three years ago, had they allowed it to be funded at the way it was set, Danbury would be receiving more money. So we need to bring some pressure to bear, so that people realize that, that we can sustain programs if they support us more, so I hope all of you will be there October 5th. Update on the principal search?
Yeah.
You can also do the meeting we attended last week.
Okay.
At the same time.
So update on the principal search, we're pulling together the panels now, you might remember, the board actually has regulations that support the policy on hiring of principals, and the regulations call for two panels. So, Madam Chair, what I will need at some point soon, are two members of the board event to sit on one of the two panels. The panels will run concurrently, as we've done in the last several years. The first panel being colleagues and peers, curriculum folks, who will ask some substantive questions about content and philosophy and theory about the high school. The second panel will be those most likely to be affected by the hire, teachers, maybe other administrators in the building, other representatives of different stakeholders up at the high school. That panel will also include at least one, maybe two representatives from the school governance council. You'll remember that the SGCs are in an advisory role to the principal and ultimately to the district on the hire, so we like to have them folded into the process as best we can to try to keep it a little bit manageable. Right now, we're in the, I'm also in the process of pulling together materials, so there will be the advanced writing sample that we've used in the past, there'll be a series of questions that we'll review with the panelists in advance, all with an eye toward an interview with the superintendent and his select leadership group at the end as finalist. So we're hopeful, we've screened and selected, I believe it was seven, Dr. Sal, seven applicants to go through this initial round, and we're hopeful that we'll find someone who's just right. You'll remember too that we're looking to the guidance that we got from Jackie Jacoby, who was the consultant we brought in to do some focus group meetings, meet with parents, meet with students, meet with faculty and administrators up at the high school. So we're reviewing again her report and the findings that she made about goals and hopes of all of those stakeholders for this new incoming principal. So, at your leisure, you can let me know who the two are that you'd like to be involved in the process.
When you have the dates, if you let me know, it will help facilitate that.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All righty, Sal, go.
She's got some.
Oh, okay.
You have one.
Yeah, I have another one. I don't know whether any of you saw, there was a, actually a nice article in the Times, in the News Times a couple of days ago, about the minority hiring initiative across the country and also what we're doing here in Danbury. So, Dr. Sal and I, last week on Thursday, went to a meeting that was sponsored by the NAACP, to which they had invited a variety of representatives from historic black colleges and universities, HBCUs, and there are many, and they're located primarily in southern states, but across the country, and there were two parts to the program. The first were breakout sessions. I attended one that the lead panelist was Sarah Barzy, who's the chief talent officer at the State Department of Education, and she led a panel that talked a lot about how to attract candidates to the state of Connecticut, whether there are certification barriers, for example, for folks that are graduating from very high-quality education programs at some of these HBCUs. So she talked some about that. She also talked about the State Board of Education's initiative, and it's a big priority this year, on not only recruitment, but on induction and retention issues, and those are the same things that we've been looking at here in Danbury as well. And the State Department of Education really is working hard with a number of districts to put in place some protocols about, do you have appropriate and sufficient resources that teachers of color or other minority applicants would have to, to work with as they try to acclimatize and integrate into our community? And so it may be something like connections to community, like faith-based organizations or housing groups, it may just be peer groups within a particular building. So there's a lot of discussion going on right now at, not only at the national, but at the state level really here, about how we do better with the percentage of minority teachers that we're attracting to the district. Again, the goal is for us to have a population of certified staff that look like, that come from similar cultural backgrounds of the students that they're serving, so that they can act as effective role models, and they have a cultural competence about what these kids are going through as they make it through our educational system. So, we attended that, I attended that first breakout session, and then the second was, these individual representatives from these other schools basically did a marketing pitch to us, why we should come and look at some of their schools for applicants. And some of the programs are very impressive, we talked a little bit about connecting, you know, using technology to connect with some of them, and what we could do to kind of go down and take a look at some new candidate pools. So, that's a work in progress for us, but is in keeping with a lot of the work that we're trying to do in the district this year in particular, hand-in-hand, you know, really in partnership with the State Department's initiatives as well.
They talked a little bit about the Aspen Program Summit we've started here in Danbury as a way of retaining our own.
Mm-hmm.
Which I thought was interesting.
Right.
Trying to promote throughout the state. We started that last year.
Yes.
And Sarah Barzy was really interested in that.
Yep.
The other interesting fact that they have many, one of them was that the graduates of these mainly black colleges take jobs within 90 miles of their hometown.
Yep.
So, you know, they do stay around, so, one of the connections we made, University of Delaware, they offer a lot of majors and areas that we're interested in, and they have a real diverse population, so we're trying to make some connections with that particular university. It's closer, it's in the north, we're probably more likely to have folks stay with us, so those are our efforts. This year, I don't know if you shared, but we had about, what was the percentage of Hispanic?
Our overall percentage of minority hire in this pool this year of our incoming teachers was about 17%. That's a good clip higher than we've been in the last couple of years. It was driven largely by Latino and Hispanic candidates, that number was about 13% of the group, and our other populations, other minority populations, and again, they self-identify according to the federal standards on the, on the application, but those other groups, African-American, Asian, Native American, are really under 2%, 1% to 2%. And so one of the numbers that I've been looking at with the data folks downstairs is what is our current population of students in those categories, and are we at all bridging the gap between our population of certified staff and the demographic population of our kids? And we're closing the gap, but I will say, it's still a pretty significant one, and it's not surprising because the most difficult positions for us to fill have been the T-Sol positions, the bilingual positions, and that's typically where we tend to find a lot of our minority candidates, is in those content areas, and those people are in very, very high demand. You know, we're, we're poaching from districts just as they're poaching from us. So what were the numbers then? About 70%, 17% of the 65 applicants were of minority status, one minority status, one another.
Hires, not applicants.
I'm sorry, of hires, new hires. Okay. And about 13% were Hispanic and Latino. And then how was that looking when you sent it across the district? Last year, we were about 12, which is about nationwide, so we were above where we've been the last several years. And what I'll do, either at the next meeting or following, as soon as I get on the presentation schedule, I'll do for you what we did last year, which was to look at not only the demographics of the student population, but also of this group, and also to look at, you know, where are they coming from?
Preparation.
What schools, so we'll look at a whole hiring update for you on that. But the piece, I think too, that's interesting, is one of the things, and we had a good conversation with, I think it was the person from Delaware as well, is, you know, if you can't find a larger pool of applicants who are of minority status, what else should we be doing? And one of the ideas that's starting to float out there is this cultural competency training. And I know the State Department of Education has an initiative now to make that a mandatory part of continuing education for our teachers, but that's another thing that we're looking at. Can you, can, it's not a 100% substitute, but it certainly is, it helps to go hand-in-hand with our efforts to recruit minority teachers. So we'll look to at kind of a distance learning model with some of these places and see if we can't put something in place.
Thank you, Anne, thanks again.
And let's see, Joe, the school building grant?
As part of the alliance districts this year, the state of Connecticut's allocated $50 million to what is called minor school construction initiatives, and this was new money as part of the governor's budget that was rumored about months and months ago, but actually they've come to fruition. So Danbury's eligible for a $1.7 million grant for, in a sense, or called minor facility upgrades, so that would be ideally, you see in the grant, a parking lot pavings, air-conditioner retrofits, for example, floor tower replacement, locker replacement, typically things that weren't, will be eligible in a major project like when you renovate high school. So these would be, if you wanted to replace lockers in one of the middle schools or those sorts of things, they're all eligible items that can apply for, for state funding. I have a meeting with the state, I believe, October 5th or 6th, to discuss the program more. The grant application has to go through the Board of Education, and we obviously had some more conversations with city funding and how the money travels around, but that's the, it's kind of exciting, it's interesting, the state's never done it before, so it's, it should be, you know, $1.7 million, it will go a long way in some of our schools, so, good stuff.
Do I have any questions for Joe?
Okay. I guess not. Lastly, Kathy had mentioned something in her comments, we yesterday in our cabinet meeting talked about the lottery, the middle school lottery, and we have some recommendations to talk about, and we'll probably do at the next meeting. We, our enrollment differential is about 100 between the Rogers Park and Broadview. The initial idea here a number of years ago was, in order to balance enrollments, those enrollments, you get it the one or two ways, you could redistrict or increase parent choice. And I think from that stem, we began looking at seriously parent choice, increased parent choice, and that's when we began the magnet school over at Rogers Park. That equalized somewhat, although the interest from Broadview to relocate and go to Rogers Park wasn't as great, so there were more seats taken up at, for a few years, from Rogers Park students simply because of the numbers of applicants. But since we've opened up this one here, we've been trying to balance. We're within 100, the reason why we didn't redistrict, you may recall, we were going to see how this played out in terms of balancing. Our original intent was to have a larger middle school of 800, which would have helped us tremendously with the balance, but as it is, we're at 600, 300 from each academy. So we're looking at that stabilization and those numbers. We'll know October 1st, but we probably We'll know October 1, but we've probably grown, this is just a draft number of about 250 students, so we were growing at 1.25%. We're over 20% growing now. So we're still growing in the district, but we're still moving students, particularly at the middle school, right now that we have an unbalance at Rogers Park and Broadview. But we want to look at increased parent choice, increased system with some of the thinking that the board had from the last meeting. So we'll be talking about that at the next meeting. I don't know if Bill or Joe want to add to that? Yep?
I just have a question about what the enrollment is at the two middle schools. The, not.
Well, overall, I'll take Westside. Westside, Westside's about 500.
Yeah.
And I think, I know there's about 102 difference.
Yeah.
There's 102 more students at Broadview than Rogers Park and I can't reg, I don't know if it's 870 to 970, I'll have to take, but we'll have it next time.
I want to.
October 1st is really what we should wait for. And they'll give you the official, but right now it's about.
They're still in a balance though.
Oh, yeah, about 100, about 100. It had been about 170 to 190, you know, at one time, but it's at 100 right now, 103. So anyway, in light of the comments today, we'll be bringing some at the next board meeting for conversation in preparation of the lottery going forward for this year, for next year. So that is all, thank you.
Okay. Lexi, you wanted to say whatever it is you're trying to say to me, I'm sorry.
Sarah, do you have to run? Sarah has to run, so we were going to give a presentation earlier. This is about something.
What? What you were talking about before, I thought you were going to do before next, the next meeting.
The next, okay.
Okay, please, all right.
No problem.
Thank you. All right, I'm so sorry. There you go. And are there any questions to follow up on what Joe was talking about, guys? Anybody have questions? Sal, I mean Sal.
No.
No, okay, let's go. Cave, who's going to Cave? The convention. Besides you, Sal? And Kathy?
I think, um, like 90%.
No, we need to know, they need to book the rooms, so.
Yeah, if I answer now, then no.
No.
But if I, I'll, I'll.
Like 24 hours?
So I'll have a better.
I'm sorry.
A day is fine.
A day is fine.
Yeah, I'm 95% sure I'm going.
Okay.
I'd like to book rooms this week. But no, that's.
Yeah, is that all right? Anybody else going that we know of? Gladys, you're coming?
I'll go tomorrow.
No, didn't check on it tomorrow? Okay.
She's busy.
All right.
I'd love that.
I get it. Okay, I know, just. Is there anyone here that I'm not able to go, that I don't know, I'm not speaking for everybody? Is there anybody here that's going to go to the dinner for Julia Horn?
No.
I'm sorry. It's the.
I'm playing. One, two, I'm playing.
All right, so you're, oh, so good, we'll have some representation there, that will be good. All right, Gladys is going to go. Nobody else?
October 15th.
October 15th.
It's October 15th at the Ethan Allen. All right.